All right, I call this meeting to order. Stand for the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have action on the minutes? I'll start with, can we do them both together or do we need to do them separately?
Uh, we can do them separately.
I'm trying to make it fast.
I know.
Okay, so for the April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Move to approve.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous? The May fifth, twenty-one.
Move to approve.
Any discussion?
Heather.
Yes. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous? Okay, I started passing around the documents. No nominations, Tom, resignations.
I have two, Christopher Snyder, principal of the Baky School, and Jolene Horn, special education teacher.
Move to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Superintendent's report.
Good evening, I just wanted to say that this week has been pretty exciting. We had a, my favorite night of the year is our scholarship night. We handed out over fifty thousand dollars in scholarships to students from the community and various organizations. And I just wanted to thank everyone who donated and contributed. And just wanted to also say that I had a really great day today. I spent the whole afternoon meeting with high school professional learning communities, talking about various topics. And they all pertain to the creation of a strategic plan. So I'm working, Dr. Haynes and I are working on a draft of the strategic plan for your consideration. And the way that we've decided to go about it is first, I'm going to meet with all of the staff and ask them what they think should be included in a strategic plan. And then I'm going to meet with all of our students in grades seven, eight, and eleven and twelve, and then hopefully nine and ten, if I can fit them all in before the end of the year. I want to grab the eleventh and twelfth grade students because they're leaving. And I want to get the seventh and eighth grade students because the plan will affect them the most. And then if I can get the other group, I will, I've got a bunch of them scheduled, but I wanted to hear from the kids. What's working, what's not working, and what do you think we could do differently? Why not? So I'm meeting with a lot of people over the next three weeks. And our hope is to draft the, an outline of the strategic plan, share it with administration and staff, get feedback over the summer, and then bring it to you for feedback and to the community for feedback early in the fall. It's our feeling that if, if we can get it done, provided that we can continue to work on our actual jobs instead of just managing COVID, we will be able to use the strategic plan to support the budgeting process. And that's really what we need to do. We need to have a plan aligned and then make budgeting decisions based on the plan. We are, we are on what I would consider to be an extremely aggressive timeline to get this done. But I also feel like, because I've spent so many hours meeting with people over the last four years and listening, mostly prior to COVID, and then, and then now, I think Dr. Haynes and I have a pretty good handle on the things that need to be improved and what to do through all of our conversations. So what we're going to do is we're going to try to reflect all of that in the document. And then we'll ask everyone for feedback to see if, if it's, if it's a hit. And we will definitely share it with staff before we share it out with the community to make sure that the staff have, have had input. Because we believe that everyone should have a voice in the future of the district in the sense that, you know, we, we help teachers to implement, but ultimately they sit with the students day by day. So we want to make sure that it's congruent with their reality too. And of course, we want to hear from parents and community members. And the, the great work by the, the, there's a, the graduation committee at the high school has done some incredible work talking about the graduation requirements and what colleges and businesses are looking for. That information can be considered and implemented and used in our strategic plan. We have the CIP plan, the Capital Improvement Plan draft is, is almost ready, which is a big part of a strategic plan. And we have the Portrait of a Graduate and the Definition of Student Success. So what I see is, all of these different pieces that are out there will come together into one document to help guide our decision-making, which should help us with budgeting. So it's going to be an exciting summer. I'm really, I'm really enjoying coming to work and, and working about teaching and learning and thinking about the district. And kind of, I'm feeling like I'm coming out of the COVID, aside from some of the questions that come up right now, because it's, it's still messy. But it's certainly where I able, Dr. Haynes and I have noticed that we're able to do a lot more of the work that we love to do, which is to help kids learn. And I look forward to those days and today's conversations were really invigorating. So that's my report and kept it pretty short, I think, for me, so I'm trying.
Committee reports. Policy, do you have anything to report out on?
Yes, so we met on Tuesday, May eleventh. I, Heather Ingham was selected as chair. We reviewed two policies. IHBAA Evaluation Requirements for Children with Specific Learning Disabilities, IHBC, Established Criteria for Special Education Evaluations. And we moved for those to be reviewed by the board.
Thank you. Lisa.
The Excellence in Student Achievement Committee met this, this evening, just before our meeting. I will be the chair again. And we did have a report from the Graduation and Schedule Committee. I don't know if that's the official name. I'll report on that at our next meeting because it was a lengthy, it was a lengthy meeting and a lengthy discussion. Our next meeting is on June sixth, I'm sorry.
It's worth watching the video on that one, there's a lot of information.
Definitely.
Finance. Sixteen.
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll give this to Phyllis to put it in for the full record rather than reading the forty-two point seven pages of it. But the, the relevant things to note is that I was, I was nominated, re-elected as chair. Mr. Angel gave his highlights, which included that we are now a hundred percent collected on state funds that were due to us. He did identify some risk areas, roof damage at the seminary building. He is contacting the buyer to see what options there are and what they're going to be doing to try to minimize the cost on that. And to check on insurance, we've got further information that he reviewed with us on the Baky Boiler. And he talked about the Memorial Playground Updates Needed. There were three line item transfers requested. One was eleven thousand from physical therapy, occupational therapy, therapy from Baky to the high school. Additional two thousand from Memorial to preschool. Same, it's just going where the kids are and where they're needed. And so it's all budgeted and just transfer funds. Item two was nineteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine from pre-K to Baky for other professional services. And fifty thousand from middle school to Baky for special ed transportation. So again, it's all just moving to where the kids are and moving in between mine items of budget. There was feedback on the, on the audits. And so, Tom, those are items that I'm going to need to get with you on. The, the action items from the meeting was for me and you to meet on, on those items. We went through the trust funds, not big changes there primarily, it's just the interest rates or the interest earnings, there wasn't a lot of spending on those. And then we had a number of different spending discussions as to how much was COVID? How much of the COVID money was still in the spending reports? So we have spending reports that say we spent X amount of money. And seeing as we have, we got about a million one in grants from COVID. The question is, is that money still in the spending reports, still to be taken out of the spending reports and applied? Meaning that spending goes down by a million one? And Matt said, no, no, the spending has already been pulled out of the reports and applied to the grants. And there's only about ten thousand dollars in the spending reports and still to come out. So there's not extra money in the spending reports when we look at the spending. Already been applied to the grant that you see from the COVID. One of the things that we've asked Matt and, and Mr. Angel is out presently, so we have to get back with him. But one of the focuses that we want from the administration is to take a look at, where does it look like the end of the year is coming in? There's some, you know, we're going to have to deal with the Baky Boiler. What does it look like we're going to have for unexpended funds? What can we do to marshal those funds and preserve them and then deal with some of these other issues that we're facing with? And so there's discussions on that. And the rest of it, I'll, I'll pass along and we just include in the minutes from this meeting.
Thank you.
Great. Facilities.
So the Facilities Committee met on Wednesday, May eleventh. The meeting was called to order at three thirty PM. Jamie Fitzpatrick, Pete Broderick, Jim Baker, Superintendent Ambrose, and School Safety and Facilities Manager Dan Doyle were present. I was re-elected as chair. The committee met at the DJ Baky School. We viewed the two boilers and the boiler room. We reviewed and discussed the condition of the boilers. We discussed the option and cost to replace one boiler and repair the other, as well as proposals for replacing both boilers, along with accessory systems. We refined the scope of work and asked Mr. Doyle to get some additional pricing for replacing both boilers with new burners, plus installing a new pressure tank. The committee agreed to meet again as soon as that information is available. We also briefly reviewed CIP plans. Work will continue on pricing and scheduling work planned for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year and ongoing CI, the ongoing CIP plan. Unless we meet sooner, the facilities meeting is scheduled for June second at three thirty PM in room one twenty-one in the middle school wing.
Thank you. Public Relations.
Could I, could I just add one thing to facilities? Just, just for the public's knowledge, we, we did receive, which was a very quick turnaround, the updated specs for the Baky Boiler from the engineer today. And Mr. Doyle forwarded those on to the three bids, the, the companies that did the three bids. They're going to revise their bids and he's hoping to have them by June first. So I'll be in touch with Mr. Baker about when facilities needs to meet, but I sent the information to the board in an email, but I just wanted to disclose that publicly, that we are moving as fast as possible to get the boiler situation straightened out. And I'll talk about it more as an agenda item later.
Public Relations.
Public Relations met on May eleventh, in attendance, myself, Ms. Ingham, Ms. Basa, Dr. Haynes. I was elected chair and that was really the purpose of our meeting. So our, we don't have another meeting scheduled yet, so as yet, I don't believe, so stay tuned on that.
Okay. Personnel. Supposed to meet today, but we did end up canceling the meeting. Nothing on the agenda. Our upcoming work will be on updating job descriptions or congruency. But we were not, there was not enough information to start moving forward on that yet. Our next meeting is June sixteenth at three PM. SST.
Yes, SST met and we, we discussed the, the same outstanding issues that SST is facing, which is the cost per people and enrollments and strategies to help with those two items. The SST is working with their master schedule and trying to figure out ideas to help with. It's hard because when you send a student to SST, you lose a period of the day for travel. Right? And so that is one of the problems that they face is the travel time. And they're also looking at some different programming options and schedules to try to help with their enrollments.
Thank you. We don't have anything for budget yet. I don't know if there's a report for wellness yet.
Nope.
Yep. All right, Jake, shouldn't there be a budget report?
The Budget Committee met somewhere along the way.
Oh, did you guys meet? Yeah.
My apologies.
Yeah, it was, the Budget Committee did meet on April twenty-first. It was just a meeting to kind of start off the year where we talked about the schedule and meetings with the school board. And it hasn't yet been finalized. And Jim McCarthy was re-elected as chair.
Did they, they replaced a member, right, a resign, well, they replaced you.
Um, yes, my replacement was Cheryl Gannon. Was, yep.
And they elected her vice chair, right?
No, Vanessa Matias.
Oh, Vanessa Matias, vice.
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
Sorry, now it's your turn, Jake.
All right. The Senior Class Council is having a Kona Ice Truck at the high school Tuesday the twenty-fifth. It's a fundraiser. And we're going to be selling slushies for six dollars a slushie during F L T.
Oh, cool.
And the other thing I have is Student Council's holding a raffle this week with three different baskets. The first one is worth twenty dollars and it costs five dollars for a ticket. It's going to be full of like candy and maybe a gift card. One worth sixty dollars, worth ten dollars per ticket, which will be, I think, another gift card and a nice hydro flask or a nice water bottle. And one basket is only for seniors and it's worth around a hundred dollars, including merchandise from a college of your choice. And that's going to be worth fifteen dollars for a ticket.
Cool. Who, who do we seat if we want to buy a ticket? All right, we'll go see you, you're easy to find. All right.
Awesome.
Mr. Broderick will take three for the most expensive one.
All right. Whatever you want to give me, that's fine. How much are they?
The first one is five dollars and it's worth ten, it's worth twenty. And the second one is six dollars worth ten, and the third, third one is for seniors only.
Okay, so I need, just give me thirty bucks, we'll call it even.
All right, I'm on it. I'll be over Jake.
All right. I'll give it to you as soon as he gives it to me.
You got it.
You ain't going to get it.
All right, first public comment. All right. New business, acceptance of thousand dollar donation to Baky School.
Thanks, so we, we did receive a thousand dollar donation and asking the board to, to motion to accept that. The, the Tech Box Project will provide five at-home learning bins available for students in grades two and three at Baky Elementary School who do not have materials and space to learn successfully at home. So it's designed to help the students that are working remotely that are, that need some support. There's a, a, a layout or a definition in your packet. I don't want to read the whole thing, but we asked that the board accept that.
Yes.
Question on the donation, who was it from or is it anonymous?
It is from Consolidated Connects Educational Grants.
I just wanted to make sure that we gave due recognition.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Move to accept. Second. Any discussion? I think we already had that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous? Approval of N H D E.
So like we do every year, we have to sign off on the general assurances from the Department of Education at the state in Concord. And those general assurances basically are the rules and the regulations that the S A U needs to follow in order to receive the Title Fund Grants, Title One, Title Two A, Title Four, I D E A, those grants that we receive from the federal government. And we have to make sure that we follow what's written in the, in the assurances. It's a huge document and we've, this is just a regular yearly thing. So I'm just presenting that and hoping that the board will accept that and proper signatures will be made so that I can send those back to the state tomorrow morning.
And I think just to add to that, what this basically means, assurances, for those of you who are new, means we're going to use the money for what it's intended to be used for. It's, it's a technical document that requires us to use the federal funds appropriately.
Frauds off the table?
Frauds off the table.
All right, just wanted to verify. Okay with that.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Approval of the twenty twenty-one M S twenty-two?
The M S twenty-two is a state required form for revenue. And it's a standard document as well. Mr. Angel prepares it annually and you have it in your folder so that you can take a look at it. I have it here for signatures when the board approves it.
Question? Was Mr. Angel able to do this himself or did we have a sub in in order to get it?
Oh, thanks. Well, Mr. Angel has been on, I believe he's technically as of today on what's called intermittent F M L, F M L A, which means he can work as he's able to from home. So he has worked on this and Marie Monday, which I do want to give a huge shout out to, is our accounts, not accounts payable. She does kind of the bookkeeping side of the business office, but is also working toward her, her certification as a business administrator. She has done an exceptional job doing her role, helping Matt with some things with his role, and trying to implement the new accounting software, which is a massive task. Because the chart, chart of accounts is, needs to be straightened out for our district, as Jamie and I have talked about at length. And, and in addition to the chart of accounts, there's all the hand checking, you know, you know, I love it when tech companies say massage the data. What that really means is to hand, we downloaded it for you, now check it all. And so she's doing a great job, so thanks for asking, and I did want to give her a shout out tonight.
Move to approve. Second. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll circulate this for signatures.
Thank you. And then I have to sign the other one that we.
Yep, that's this one right here.
Um, approval, approval of amendment for flexible spending.
Thank you. So this one was funny because I, I received this in the, in the email and it said, it says on it cafeteria plan.
I was confused.
So I started reading it and I'm like, what? I thought it had to do with the summer food program for the kids with the federal government and the free food. Phyllis and I got it, it's about flexible spending accounts for medical. They're basically extending the flexible, flexible spending accounts out into later in the year. So when you, normally in a year, if you put two thousand dollars in a flexible spending account, you have to spend it within a calendar year or you lose the additional funds. And I think you can carry over up to like four or five hundred dollars. They're allowing us to carry over more and so there's, we just needed the board to accept that and I need a signature from Dawn. Yes.
Pronoun they, who's allowing this?
Oh, the federal government is allowing a waiver in the amount due to COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. The IRS, technically.
Do we have a motion?
I, I, I move to support. I move to support.
Hold a second.
Any discussion?
My only point is, anybody that doesn't know, if the government's allowing you to do this, it's because there's a lot of people with money left out of their accounts, they're going to lose their money. The government's going to pocket it. And by extending it, it allows people to still get some additional, whatever medical needs they have because they haven't necessarily got it in COVID and not lose their money.
Right, like a lot of.
The government doesn't pocket the money though.
No, the company does, the F S A.
The company does.
Yeah. Yeah, but the, the nice thing is.
Shouldn't, but I'm just saying, yeah, it's the company that keeps the money.
Yes, we have a company. But, but the cool, in the part that is tied to the government, just for clarity for the community, is when you do an F S A, you're putting money into an account that, that is, you're not taxed on that money because it's for medical expenses. So it helps with your, your annual income tax. I think that the, the thing that happened was a lot of people couldn't get in their regular annual appointments because of COVID, because the doctor's offices were all closed. So they're trying to give people a chance to do those appointments and get, you know, like for me with the eye doctor, I could buy glasses with my F S A, which I clearly wear all the time. Just kidding. Can't see anything anymore, but I still hate wearing them because of the fogging. But anyway, um, thanks.
If you guys are good, I'm good.
Yeah, yeah. Anti-fog.
All right.
Are they need a vote?
Yes, so all in favor?
Thank you.
All right, unanimous? District decision on copier for R F P Gordon. Right up to the podium, sir.
Hello. So the district lease on our current copier machines is up July first. So we've put out for a bid on a new lease. We were able to get ten bids from seven different companies. All for thirty-six month leases. We narrowed it down to two vendors, one, our existing vendor, Kiosara, and then a new vendor named Budget Document Technology. They both have offered twelve machines to replace. Currently, we have thirteen with the consolidation of the middle school. We only needed one for them. All the machines are pretty much the same finishing wise and capability wise. Some of them are higher capacity, they, they print faster, which will be, you know, teacher room type copy machines. And ultimately came down to the decision of the new vendor, Budget Document Technology. They, they were by far the lowest bid that we received. Their references, references had nothing good to say. Nothing but good things to say about them.
That's not what I read in your report.
We knew what you meant. Yeah. And, and the implementation of, you know, it's, it's always tough when you're working with a new vendor in a project this big, between getting the old out, getting the new in. And everybody that I spoke to that have used this company said it was a, you know, perfect installation. You know, very efficient. One thing that we're adding this time around is a capability for locked printing. So ultimately, you print to a general queue across the whole district. If I print here, I go over to Memorial School. I use my card, can badge in, and I can get my print job there. So nothing comes out by itself. So it stops the, you know, oops, I sent it to the wrong printer type situation, you know, especially a larger document. And then it has the capability to put in some policies where if something isn't printed or released from the printer within, you know, seventy-two hours, it deletes from the print queue. You know, because obviously they didn't want it if they didn't release it. So that's something new that we're implementing. And it's pretty, the one they offered, I can't think of the name of it, Paper Cut is the name of the software. And I guess it was originally created for the Conica Minaltas, which is what the Budget Document Technology is offering. And they originally designed it for these machines, so it's known to work well with them. I do have experience with the locked printing. It is, you know, a nice technology. And I think it'll save, you know, a ton of paper and toner and will be good for the district. So I recommend that we move with Budget Tech, Budget Document Technologies and the Conica Minolta machines.
Anyone have questions? Yeah, Jamie?
What was a relative quote from?
For the lease for the Conicas was twenty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. And the Kia Saras were forty-three hundred a month, so whatever that works out to be.
Double it, forty-eight something.
Yeah, ultimately between the two, it was like a forty, forty-four, forty-five thousand dollar savings over the term of the lease.
Great.
Is that a reduction from what we're paying today?
So other, so for this school year, I don't know how the lease was originally done. The lease was lower this year than normal, but it's nine grand cheaper than what was all the previous years.
This new, the new one.
New one is nine grand cheaper.
Is that nine grand over three years or each year?
Each year.
Oh, great.
Yep.
Very thorough.
Yep, so we thought I had the numbers somewhere. Give me one second. Yeah, so since two thousand sixteen, we've been paying thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars a year for the lease. And this one is twenty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-two, so almost ten grand. And that's including, you know, the, the cost of the software, you know, adds to that as well by three thousand. So ultimately, the lease is, is like twenty-five thousand, around twenty-five thousand for the, the new, the new system. the new, uh, the new system and the new printers.
So Gordon, what's involved with the maintenance side of that? Is there any coverage there?
Everything. So toner repairs. Believe staples even. Uh, only thing really not included is paper.
Great. One more question. Now you've got that little card. So does the system track everybody's printing? So you can keep, you can actually individually see who's printing what?
Yeah, we can, we can pretty much track down to, you know, a single copy.
Okay.
You know, so if, if we lock it down to that point where, you know, you have to authenticate to be able to make a copy, you know, we can track all that information as well.
I've, I don't, maybe this is a silly question. What do, um, I know at Ma, at Bucky, a lot of moms go and photocopy. How does that work for, I assume they don't, they're not going to have a card. You need to go up to the copier with a card to get it to print?
You can do a card or a PIN. So if there is a situation like that, we could probably create, you know, a, a generic PIN. You know, that, you know, maybe the, the front desk knows the PIN and we'll give that out to, if somebody needs a copy that's not in the system.
Yeah.
You could get out a card for the front desk too.
Yeah. Cause I'm just, I, I, my understanding is there's like a group of moms in particular, Bucky, that they spend hours each week just photocopying.
Yeah.
Yes, they do. And we love them. Thank you, moms. Great point, Moore.
Yeah, there's definitely, you know, there's, there's all sorts of, you know, policies that can be implemented within the software. You know, say somebody has a hundred page document and they wanted to just print out page 26, but instead did quantity 26. The system can, you can set a threshold where it's like, well, that's, you know, over 300 pages. We're just going to think it's a mistake and instantly delete it. You know, so there's, there's, you know, it can go as far as that with, you know, the capabilities of the system.
But I will point out for people, it becomes problematic of, because sometimes it costs you a lot more paper. It often, depending on how you program, it defaults to double sided. And then if you're not paying attention, it's default to solve double sided and you can't use double sided for your application. Then you just throw that pile out and try again.
Yeah. Right. And that's, that's part of, uh, you know, as we're setting it up, figuring the, you know, the, the biggest no brainer is instant black and white. You know, it's going to default to black and white, no matter what, unless you choose color, because color is very expensive to print. Um, and that's another common one is to not default it to double sided. As much as I'd rather default it to double sided. Most people don't like it.
Well, not only that, but it doesn't work when you're paint, when you're printing, you know, 40 copies of worksheets for a class and they're single sided and it prints them double sided and you end up with 20. And they're double of each. It doesn't work for kids, you know? So you gotta make sure that.
Yeah.
There are all kinds. I, I did speak with Gordon today and there are all kinds of efficiencies that we plan to create around paper and copying and whatnot. And I won't go into any more details at this moment, but Gordon will be, will be working with the principals to work with staff on some, some efficiencies that we've identified around printing and training, right? Cause the skills are the most important thing, which I can't say I have them all. I might attend the training myself.
Well, I do think being able to print, once you get to the printer will save some, cause I know like if I go into the office, my laptop might just pick one of the printers and it's nowhere near, and I can't find it. So I have to print it again. And
Yep.
So you will, there will be efficiency that.
Right. And, and even on the, you know, on my side of things, you know, installing all these printers on, on laptops and making sure that, you know, our, our policies that push these printers are correct and they're in the right groups. Now it's just one. The entire district sees one printer and they can go anywhere in the district, release their print job from any of the buildings. And then you can even, you know, you, you printed 10 copies and I only needed five. You can badge in, change that right there. Oh, I needed that color. You can change it right there and make all those changes without having to reprint it again.
You're going to have to make me a laminated, single sided card for how to do all that. Probably should be, I'll tape it to the top of my computer.
They're not, probably should be something like that at each.
I'll just have Phyllis. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Gordon, for everything.
Each station should have something like that.
Yeah. Yeah. A little card.
Other questions for Gordon? All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon.
All right. Tom, athletics update.
All right. It's from Mr. Dawson. I will read it. Tournament time is fast approaching for our teams as soon as next week. Our high school tennis teams, boys and girls will begin NHIA competition as early as Tuesday of next week with opponents to be determined. Baseball and softball have one more week of regular season play with the tournament to follow. And track athletes who qualify will participate in the NHIA Division two meet on May 29th in Pelham. Sandborne will also host the NHIA meet of champions track meet, which brings together the very best high school track student athletes from New Hampshire, New Hampshire, and that's on June 5th. Middle school teams also have one more week to play with tournaments commencing the first week of June. Middle school teams will have award ceremonies after their final home games of the year, or perhaps even sooner. Softball's award ceremony was outdoors following their game today. And high school senior nights are happening this week with team by team awards coming soon. COVID. In short, we've recently adopted the NHIA's updated tournament recommendations for masking of our high school athletes. This now allows student athletes to unmask when outdoors and act, and actively participating in their sport or event during practices, games or meets. So to keep it simple, if you're running really, really fast and hard for a long time, you can take your mask off. But when you're three feet near someone else, put it back on. If you're out in the left field of the baseball game, you can take it off. But when you go near your teammates, you can put it on. That felt good to say. I just wanted to say that for me. All right. So the Tri-County Association, which governs middle school sports is still requiring masks during competition. In addition, if our opponent's athletes are required to wear masks, we will normally match that as a sign of respect for their athletes and coaches. While spectators are recommended to mask up, that is no longer required in line with the recommendations of the CDC in the state of New Hampshire. The athletic director would like to remind people to respect the areas around our athletes during competition. No one should be near the bench areas. We have had no impacts of COVID on our teams over the last two weeks. Good. So we're moving in a positive direction.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
I might be able to answer it.
So it sounds like for high school sports, the student athletes can unmask, but the middle school students still have to mask.
Yeah. And Mr. Stack, did Bob just send a message about that a minute ago about, hold on?
There's two, there are two different.
Groups. It's two different groups.
NHIA is high school and is tri-county is middle school.
Okay.
Different sets of regular. So high school, yay, no masks. Middle school, still masks.
Yep. And, and Bob said, in case you haven't done my report yet, because this is how things work, how quickly this changes. So Bob's out of game and he texts me and says, hey, if you haven't done my report yet, I'm hearing Bob's voice in my brain. The Tri-County Association, which governs middle schools, decided to go with recommending masks today, not required. So he'll update immediately. Okay? So we're updating in real time. We're going for it as, as comfortably as we can.
That's good for.
And, and I do, I'm going to take just a moment and I do not want to discuss this, this evening because it's not on the agenda, but I do want to share that I want to remind everyone that students are reminded regularly during recess that they may take their mask off at any time, as long as they're distance from other students. There's this whole business on the internet and hubbub about the heat outdoors and the, the kids having to wear masks. I've met with the principals again to reiterate that if you're outside and you're more than six feet away from someone, you can take your mask off. The reality is I went to Baky and Memorial Friday during the heat to see the kids. They're not taking their masks off. Why? They're having so much fun. They're not even thinking about it. I just wanted to see it myself so that I could address it without it being like, well, the principal told me or a teacher told me, I wanted to go and I'm, I'm saying it. That the kids are not having a problem with wearing masks. They are fine. I want to be clear about that. Do I like it? No. Do I think we're getting to the point where we're going to talk about it? Absolutely. We'll have to discuss it for the fall. But we are not changing anything with three weeks left for school. It's foolish to get into this. Adults at sports games and kids out on a field or a kid running for two miles at a full outrun. I pushed hard for this to get changed because I believe that if you're not six feet near somebody, you can run and not have a mask on. It just feels foolish. So I'm really glad that Mr. Dawson, he has worked. I just want everyone to know how hard Mr. Dawson has worked to lobby the correct people in support of, of, of making changes. So thank you very much to everyone. And thanks to our staff and everybody. I mean, again, I'll remind everyone, we have had zero cases of COVID transmission at the Sandborne Regional School District all year. That is awesome. And we've been open five days a week since October.
Yay. Yes, Jamie.
So I just want clarification for the public. When we say in, in sports or running hard, whatever, so long as you're not near anybody, no athlete is going to be closing in on the person in front of them and stopping to put a mask on.
No, absolutely. Yeah. The term is actively participating.
Actively participating.
Right.
But if they're on the benches or the dugout.
Benches dug out, hanging out.
Okay.
It really, what the reality is, is that the transmission occurs when you're near someone for 10 minutes and they're aspirating. And so we're trying to deal with the rules. The problem with the kids on the playground is, is they are right on top of each other playing. They're not separate, but we have set it up so that they can unmask at any time. All right. Thank you. Thank you for hearing me on that too. And I really, I want everyone to know, we're watching this every single day, reading everything that comes in. If Dr. Haynes was still here, I would just say to her, thank you so much for her hard work and her science background in her leadership on these issues. It's been critical.
All right, Brian.
All right.
Ready? Rain plan for graduation. Tell me all about it.
All right. Let's, uh, I was going to say, you're going to take, I want you to take a vote for that weather, please.
Yes.
Perfect.
Weather.
Yep. Couple of things I want to update you on with graduation, just unless, uh, yeah. So we're, and we're going to start pushing out this information tomorrow morning to families, as long as you're okay with it. We've unofficially shared that these are preliminary things. So, um, there's going to be a little extra information on baccalaureate for Thursday night. The church is a go for that. That'll be an in-person event for families and graduates. And we've created an RSVP form for people, just so we can get a rough head count, just so we can tell the church how many to expect. But if, you know, if we're not exact, that's fine. So we're looking forward to that. That's a school related event, remember? Not a school sponsored event. We are going to be running a graduation practice the morning of graduation. I'm not going to do anything the day before. I'd rather just contain the kids to assembling that day than spread it out over time. We are, we've added, we found a way, we believe to add that traditional elementary school walk so that the, you know, we started several years ago, busing the graduates to the elementary schools so they can walk through the halls, see their, um, teachers in the building. It will be an outdoor event. It will be at all three schools. The principals are going to have the kids outside lined up, social distanced. The graduates will come in a bus, get off. They'll kind of walk outside in whatever pattern the elementary school has, maybe take a picture. And then we're going to get back on the bus and go to the next elementary school. So instead of having our graduates pick a bus and go to one school, they're going to go to all three schools. I'm expecting about 40 or 50 kids are going to want to participate in that. It will be optional. So it makes a lot more sense to have them all go to all three schools than to have a group show up and there's only 12 graduates there. You know what I mean? So it also helps us keep the kids moving. It also helps us solve the dilemma that the Kingston and Newton kids, it doesn't really make sense necessarily to them to go to the school they think they should go to if they wanted to see teachers versus the building, right? So we're going to try that. Uh, we're going to see how that goes. And then rain plans for graduation. So as you know, our graduation is always held the same night, rain or shine, logistically. It, it's impossible for us to change the date of the event to get around rain. Once we set it, there's just too many parameters. Things that we rent, people that we hire, family coming in. So it will be happening Friday night. However, our plan relies heavily on us having that in-person beautiful weather on the football field system. So recognize it might be beautiful that day, but it's rained for three days prior and the field is a mess, right? So we're going to be thinking about and looking at this, the week of graduation, potentially making that decision to use our rain plan as early as Wednesday, a couple of days before, if it seems obvious. Probably at the latest by Thursday morning, we have to commit one way or another. And then we're, we're not going to change it at that point because we've got too much to set up. The rain plan would be that our graduates would still go through the parade with their families. When they get back here to the campus, cars would all be parked and instead of the families getting out and going to the football field, families would stay in their vehicles. The graduates would come into the gymnasium. We would be running the graduation ceremony from the gymnasium, live streaming it with our tech folks so that families can be watching from their phones in their cars. And then when we get to the diploma distribution part of the ceremony, we will have a system so that we can queue up a dozen families at a time outside so that they'll be able to come in one at a time as their graduate walks across the stage. They'll be able to be right there, front and center to watch the entire thing, take some pictures. And then they'll head right out and we'll have the next group come in. And we'll just make announcements as we're doing the live feed, you know, families of graduates A through D. You can now head over to the doors and get lined up. So we don't have to have ushers running around trying to find who's in what car. That's the plan. Which is why I said vote for good weather.
All week.
All week. All week. Yep.
Do we have a bandwidth for all those, uh, remote things signing on at the same time all around the campus?
So.
Question.
Family wise, they wouldn't really be able to get on. They could use the guest network, but the guest network's probably, you know, uh, pretty low. So most people like to use data, you know, on their phones, um, watching it. We had, you know, last year graduation was, you know, similar in the sense of having a large group within range of watch time.
Because I was only thinking some people might be using their Chromebooks because that's what they have.
Absolutely. Yep. Absolutely. We can look at that. I mean, I, it's a great point, Jamie. I, you know, I don't know. Gordon, maybe we can put our heads together and see if there are some temporary options that we could set up if, if that's going to come into play. I mean, I don't, you know.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's tough either way because of the comfortable ball field. We're going to have to be sending a, you know, a microwave signal from the top of the building down to the field receiving end, and we're going to have to restrict the connection there so that any digital cell phone can jump on the wireless access, access point that we have down there in order to allow us to stream and get updates. Where in the school, I can't really, you know, bring the whole network down in order to isolate it so that we can do the live. We might have to get creative in a situation like that, but with inside the school, we would be hardwired. So we'd likely, you know, either bring the wireless access points down in the areas or something like that. But I.
My suggestion would just be set the expectations before the event. So you don't have people thinking they're going to be able to get on or.
Yeah, that you have to use your data.
Or something and then they can't.
And yeah.
You got all kinds of torque people.
Yep. No, I think that's a, that's a great point. It, it brings up a larger issue that we've had all year that we've put a lot of increased demand on our tech folks to do more streaming for us. And we really, we don't really have, one, the equipment. Well, we have the expertise because they're very good, but definitely staffing and equipment come into play. And I know we've, Gordon and I have talked about sort of the post-COVID, there will definitely be more need and expectation for more streaming opportunities. And we've got some different strategies that we'll employ over time that are, but you know, will allow us to do more, but it is definitely uncharted territory. We've never done it. So good point.
How many family members if will be allowed to go into the gym?
Oh, that's, yeah, that's a great point. It actually reminded me that one of our other updates is we, we have pushed out a form for people who need extra tickets for outdoor, because we are allowing people to request extra tickets. So we're not going to limit family size at that point, because if they were, you know, we're expecting it's going to be a relatively small group and they're all coming in together. They're going to stay together as a. They're going to stay together as a group socially distanced from anybody else. So, I mean, unless you know of a graduate planning to bring like a bus of people, I don't, you know. I think we'll be okay with that. We're not going to restrict. Yeah.
We do have a couple of sets of first cousins, so you may have double.
That's fine. That's fine. And, and you know, the questions come up for the outdoor ceremony. So there are, you know, there are different reasons that people might request additional tickets. And as you know, every graduate can have six in their box. So just to answer a couple of common questions for people that are listening, they, you know, might help save some emails and some wanderings down the road. But some people only need one or two tickets. So a common question I get is, can you just add a couple of chairs to my box? The answer is no, because then that'll change the geography of how we're setting these all up. So our starting point answer is to say, we're going to give you a second box. Another thing that comes up is they want to know, um, if they're, if they have to request a second box, are they going to be next to each other? And the answer is probably not, because what we are trying to do is we are, um, the front half of the football field, all of our 180 graduates basically got a random number. And then that is giving them their box number between one and 180. And then the additional boxes that are requested are going to be in the back half so that everybody at least has, um, a chance at being in the front half of the football field, so to speak. And really the only exception to that rule that we're making is we have a few families where their, uh, their child is speaking at the event. We want to make sure that they'll be up front, which we always do. So.
Um, relative to Jamie's question about bandwidth, how is it, is there any difference between what happened last year with the public accessing the live stream of, you know, the graduation event?
Yeah, I think the, yeah, I think the big difference is if we have to use the rain plan, we are actually then asking folks to access it while they're right there on our property. Versus from anywhere else in the, you know, wherever they might be. So it's not necessarily a bandwidth issue on our wifi network. As, as Jamie says, if we're asked or letting people know that the expectation would be that you're using your own data and you're not going to have access to a wifi point necessarily here. I suppose, I don't know if you have a lot of people using data in one place. I don't think that comes into play. But if you have like 70,000 fans at Gillette Stadium using data, I mean.
Oh, okay.
But how is it?
Okay.
How, how is it different from last year though?
So the difference last year was everybody who came onto the property wasn't really watching the live stream because they were able to see the event. Some may have been. I don't, I don't know that the viewership was widespread on the property. It was more people watching it elsewhere.
But it's, but it's important to remember that the parents and the family of the student are going to see their child graduate live in person.
Right.
They'll miss like, for me, my son's two best friends that I would like to see graduate, if I have a wifi problem, I, I won't see them.
Yep.
But I'll, I would see my son.
Yep.
And that's what's most important.
But in fairness, you're going to have to have at least one live stream in every car. So you know when your family is getting called.
Yeah, we're going to have a hundred and sixty live streams. That's fine. If they're using data. If everybody in the car, four or five people, and we end up with.
Person has their own.
Three thousand, we might have a little bit of an issue, but Gordon's talking about 70,000 people slowing things. I mean, it's, depends on your company, that your data plan, your phone. It's not going to be perfect.
There's reception outside the building now. Wifi as they get close to the building, they might be able to jump on, but you know, until they're actually in the building, you know.
I think, I think to Jamie's point, it's important to just give people the heads up.
Right.
Plan to use your phone's data. And if it doesn't work, we can't accommodate that many people on our wifi system.
Yeah. And, and this is the, you know, the inherent problem is given the restrictions, we could never put 1,500 people into an indoor space. We just, you know, the only way that we've ever been able to do it is to use our gym and that definitely doesn't pass our COVID restriction guidelines.
Have to have four graduations in one day.
Yeah. And that's, you know, that's just, it's not something that, um, appealed to any of the folks who are planning this. And remember, we did have a number of students who are a very big part of planning this event, and this seemed like the most logical answer, you know? I mean, I think what's going to be most hardest for Mr. Ambrose and I is, and I keep saying this, Wednesday morning, we're going to wake up, we're going to look at the weather app. And the weather is going to tell us that there is a 40% chance of thunder showers Friday night. And we're going to have, or then we're going to have to decide, what do we do with that?
I'm not going to do that. We're going to convene a meeting of the facilities committee and we're going to have them sit on the sporting field.
There you go.
I'm going to be sick that day, whatever.
Look at the radar.
I mean, look, the, the reality is, is we're going to push off making the decision as long as we possibly can. And that's why, so we can get into Thursday morning, but at some point come Thursday morning, we just got to make the call based on what we have for information, you know? Cause we also roll the dice and run the risk that it says we're going to be in great shape. And then we get there that night and there's a pop-up shower. We may be taking a timeout for a half hour to let it pass and then proceeding. Cause at that point it's, uh, you know, it's game on. So. It's only been in, in doing this every year, non-COVID, there's only really been one year that I've done this, that the weather changed on me on a dime. And it was a little dicey and I was trying to tell the superintendent to talk faster because it was coming. But I mean, no, it wasn't you. Not you.
Oh, no, I know it wasn't me, but I wouldn't, it couldn't have been me.
No, it, but it, you know, it's, again, I, I think the key is we just try to be transparent and we communicate that heavily. You know, my plan tomorrow morning is to push out an email reminder to families in the community saying, please check out all our graduation plans. And here are some key things that have changed since we put it out three weeks ago. So that for anyone who doesn't want to go read the whole plan, they at least capture that. So please encourage people to read that. And, and again, you know, we may still have a few minor changes between now and then, and we'll communicate those out when they come up.
I just have one quick question. Uh, the Baccalaureate, um, will that also be live streamed for anyone that wants to watch it, but does not feel comfortable attending?
Yes, I believe that the church said that they were going to do that. I will double check that and we will make sure that if they confirm that, we push out a notice on that too. But I, because they are going to be, it's their system, so it would be their live stream.
Okay.
It's actually a pretty, I was pretty surprised for any of you that attend that church, you would know this already, but they've done some significant tech enhancements to be able to be in person. And they make use of several spaces indoors. They did not feel the least bit concerned, um, about being able to accommodate people who felt comfortable being there. Which obviously, you know, th- there will be some that won't be for sure.
Brian, is it at the first congregational again?
Yes.
They live stream their Sunday morning services, I believe. So they probably are used to doing that too.
Yep. So they'll be doing it, I, I believe the same exact way on that same channel.
Any other questions for Brian? All right. Um, so Brian, do you need something from us?
Yes. I, I mean, I would, if you're willing, I would love some sort of, uh, acknowledgement that, you know, this looks good to you.
I think Brian would like the board to vote to approve the rain day plan for graduation. So if you're moved, thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
The vote for the weather.
Mr. Stack, will you also thank the students that have been so diligent in working on this for us?
I will. I'm actually going to try to make a point to include all of their names in that communication tomorrow morning that goes out just because, I mean, it's great that they've, they've taken that route.
Yep.
Thank you.
Probably put their names on the program too.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Baking boiler update. Back on.
Great. Thanks. Uh, I'll make this really brief. We, so as I said earlier, we, we. The baking boiler situation, um, the facilities committee met and discussed at length, the different options and possible scope and scale of the work at Bakey. And the reality is, is that we, we talked about, um, could we, could we replace one boiler and repair the other one to just get by? And the, the estimates for that came back to be cost prohibitive. So it'd be about $45,000 to fix one. And it's, I think 75 or 70 or 80 to buy one. Then the RFPs came back and it came to light that there's, uh, when you take the boilers out and drain the system. To replace any one of three parts of the boiler system, you have to drain the system. So if you want to replace the, the pumps, which sends the hot water to the, to the classrooms, you'd have to drain the system. If you want to replace the overflow tanks, which are designed to store hot water, if you have too much, then you have to drain the system and, and replace them. And the reality is the overflow tanks and, and the, the pumps are old. One of the, for Mr. Baker, I forgot to tell you this earlier when I spoke to you, um, one of the pumps failed today. So we're, we're trying to figure out the balance of, uh, cost, immediate cost versus long-term cost to, to do more upgrades. And where the committee came out is they, they felt comfortable that we should take a look at replacing both boilers because of the cost prohibitive nature of fixing the second one. And we went and toured the facility, the.
Plus the expected lifespan of that repair.
Yeah, exactly. It was the combination of the, the cost and the lifespan of the repair was iffy.
Right.
At best. And then, and then the, the other item that we discussed is could we put in the, a new overflow tank without removing the four old ones? Because there's nothing wrong with keeping them where they are. If they're not, if they're offline, it doesn't matter.
Those are pressure tanks.
Pressure tanks. Thank you, Jim. I'm, I'm not a, I'm, I'm certainly not a, a heating technician, but I'm learning fast. So, so, um, the, it's a lot of work for the engineering company to draw up these, these specs and proposals. They did get back to us today, the updated specs for what the facilities committee was looking for. And then Dan very quickly turned it around to the three top, the, the three bidders so that they could rebid based on the new specs. And we should have those by June 1st. So my, my expectation is that we're going to bring a recommendation to the school board at the next meeting. To, we've got to move because it takes time. It's not the installation time, it's getting the product in the pandemic. And they're telling us that it's 15 days to 30 days for pricing and it's a big ticket item. I mean, we're, 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 we're looking at any, i- if we decide to do the pumps, which we had agreed not to at this time, but we'll discuss that with the new information. And I think we'll probably come out somewhere in between, uh, 300 and 400,000 for, for what needs to be done. And so I just want you all to have an update. There's nothing to really discuss tonight because we're not ready. But I want you to know that, that number one, I, I really wanted to thank Dan Doyle. He has been really going deep on this and getting information fast, working with the companies and trying to get the information in. And, and, uh, I also wanted to say that, um, he asked me about the current temporary boiler. There, he's hesitant to, we, we don't know when the boiler is going to go in in the fall and whether or not we're going to break into the heating system. We're hoping to get it installed before you have to turn the heat on, which if you have a really good year is October or mid-October. You know, if it's a bad year, it's late September. And he's afraid that if we give up the temporary boiler, that it'll be hard to get it back because there's a demand. So I'll be talking to the facilities committee about that component of this as well, because that's expensive to keep each month. The company did offer to give us a discount because we're not running the temporary boiler, but where we're keeping it on site, it, it's complicated. So I just wanted to give everyone a heads up that there's really three moving parts. One was getting the engineering design. Now we're onto the second moving part, which is to get the, the costs back and, and the, make decisions about which parts we're going to fund. And then the other third moving part is what to do about the, the, the remote boiler that we have hooked up and what to do with that over the summer. So I will be in touch with the facilities committee and we will give you all a more detailed update at the next school.
I just want to clarify. I know you mentioned, um, 15 to 30 days on the bids. It's, the bids are only good for 15 to 30 days because the cost of materials are changing so rapidly.
Yes, thank you.
So it's not like, there's not a lot of time to make this decision before prices can jump. I mean, I can't tell you how many emails I got at work today with price increases. Every day I go in, price increases.
Yeah.
2%, 8%, 10%. It's.
It's crazy.
We do the same thing. It's you have 15 days guaranteed a price and some of them we can't guarantee at all. So that's, I just wanted to point that out because that's a really important piece.
Great. Um, that's all I had.
If you have any questions.
I just, I just commented, uh, and I'm on the committee, so I've got the information, but I, uh, I'd need to, need compelling information to say pay $8,000, $9,000 a month to keep something sitting there turned off.
Yes. Yes. And that's what we'll discuss. Uh, Dan is compiling that information. And I think I forwarded an email to you regarding that for the facilities committee, but we'll discuss it at the next meeting.
And my question on that, and I don't know if this is in the information you're asking him about, but because we have, um, food there, we need hot water. Day one.
Great question. Yep. Yeah.
Our water is a different system.
Is it a different system?
Yeah, the heating is a different system.
All right. That's good.
Oh, it's fun.
So much fun.
Yeah.
All right. We got that one. All right. Uh, second public comment. All right. Um, next meeting, the next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 2nd, 2021 at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. Ooh, we get to change venues at the Sanborn Regional High School. Why are we in the auditorium? Why? I don't know.
Oh, there's something going on in the library that night. It wasn't available.
I got a comment. Um, this is the time of year when we set our goals. So I think goal setting should be on the next agenda.
Yes, it will be. That way, if we need to talk about it at the next meeting, we'll have two, you know, we need to.
Yeah.
We can have two meetings to talk about. And Isa had some good ideas. Isa had some good ideas.
Okay, great.
Wait, Pete, we got to go into non-public first.
Going into non-public.
I know that, but I want to ask your question before we go into non-public.
You're going to whisper?
Yes.
No.
No.
You didn't say that very quietly. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. No, Jake will be with us a couple of more meetings, right Jake?
I just wanted to make sure.
All right, buddy. We like to have him here. You got to have your successor too.
I know someone in mind.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You working with Mr. Stack on that?
Not yet.
All right. Might want to chat with him to find out the process. All right. All right.
All right.
Do you have tickets?
I do not have them on me, but I can write them down for you.
Well, I can give you the money now on my name. You can just fill them out. How about?
I knew he was going to buy one if I goaded him into it. All right.
All right, ready?
Motion to go into non-public.
Oh, that's me.
That's you.
That's me. Madam Chair, I move that we go into non-public by RSA 91 dash A colon 3, 2, K and J.
Second. All in favor? Uh, roll call vote. Sorry.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
More.
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right. We are now in non-public. Thank you, everyone.